Good afternoon. My apologies for my tardiness. Welcome to this afternoon's special meeting of the Marysville City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Belza?
Here.
Councilmember Gilchrist?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bada Kaboli?
Here.
And Mayor Branscombe.
Yes ma'am. Everybody please stand and join in the press. A note for the public, Madam Clerk?
Yes. If you are expecting to address the council, please fill out a speaker card, presented up front to me prior to the public comment session of this meeting. Speaker cards are available right at the podium, and you have a limit of three minutes to comment. Comments on controversial items may be further limited, and large groups are encouraged to select two to three speakers to represent the opinion of the group. Please note, in accordance with state law, the city council is not permitted to undertake any action on an item not appearing on the agenda today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Not at this time, Mayor.
And do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on consent items or items not listed in the printed agenda?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we'll now move into discussion and action calendar. All items on this calendar are voted on individually. Public comment is accepted prior to discussion of each item. The first matter, license agreement for Bryant Field. The recommendation is to pass a motion to, one, approve a license agreement for Bryant Field between the city of Marysville and the Yolo High Wheelers LLC, and, two, authorize the finance director to make the appropriate supplemental appropriations regarding the agreement upon capital improvements in the license agreement. The contact on this is Mr. Dan Flores, who is not here, so I presume someone else is going to speak up. Mr.?
I will fill in for Mr. Flores.
Please.
Good evening, or afternoon, I should say. This agreement is related to a new baseball team that would reside at Bryant Field. As many know, we have terminated the contract with the Drakes organization, the Pecos League, and I am pleased to propose for council a new agreement with the High Wheelers of the Pioneer League. What staff is recommending for council to approve is a three-year agreement with two five-year extensions. This will be an all-year occupancy rather than a seasonal occupancy, where the owners of the team will maintain the entire facility for 365 days a year. It represents a significant investment by both the city and the High Wheelers. There's ongoing contributions to the facility via ticket sales. We expect a much higher level of play with this league and this team, and we also expect a much higher level of family entertainment based on our discussions with the owners of the team. They are moving from their current location at UC Davis, and they are currently the Yolo High Wheelers, and I am expecting that the new team will be named the Yuba Sutter High Wheelers. I'm going to leave it at that. I'm sure some other council members have more to say about it, but those are the key points of the deal, and very much looking forward to the team residing here if council approves this item tonight.
Before we go to council comments, any public comment on this matter?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Belza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to make some comments on this. You know, when Bryant Field was revitalized in 2001, it was with a Major League Baseball affiliate or franchise extension team, and caliber of the stadium that we got was very, very high. And baseball's shifted and transitioned over the last 23 years now. In Marysville, Councilman Vice Mayor Bada Kaboli and I had the chance to go down and visit this organization's alternate team down in Oakland, Oakland Ballers. We're very, very impressed with their operation and organization down there. The same group will be here with the High Wheelers. And the league that they belong to is the Pioneer League, and I wanted to bring notice to the fact that this is a Major League Baseball partner league. It has the Major League Baseball stamp on it. And so the caliber of baseball in Marysville has the opportunity to go to a whole new level, and I'm excited about that. I would highly encourage the council that we approve this contract and we take Marysville's baseball into a new era. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I don't have too much to say. I'm really proud that we've gotten to this point with this team. Councilman Belza and myself have been working along with the staff to get these guys in here. It's been a long trip, all the way from the Gold Sox to the Drakes to getting to here. I think we're all going to be thrilled with this. I hope so. We were very impressed, so this has all my support. Again, thanks to Councilman Belza, Jim, Dan. We actually got to have a little bit of fun also checking these guys out, but I think this is going to be a really nice step for Marysville.
Councilman Gilchrist?
I look forward to this.
Beg your pardon?
I'm looking forward to this.
Okay. Councilman Hudson?
So I've not got much to add. Baseball is part of Marysville, and for this franchise to come to town and become a little bit greater regionally beyond just Marysville and be part of Yuba Sutter, I think is an important aspect to what we are trying to do for our region as a whole, not only Marysville. So I am very, very thankful for Councilman Belza, Vice Mayor Bada Kaboli, and staff and all the work you guys put into it in vetting this a little bit more than what's what was done. So thank you for going the full route to make sure this is going to be best for not only Marysville but for the region, and I'm in agreeance for it. And if I may have the opportunity, I'd like to make a motion to pass. Yeah, I know, Mayor. I apologize. Yeah, you get to talk too. I just, you know, jumped in the gun there.
I'll look to you for a motion. I'm, well, I'm so thoroughly impressed with this group. I'd like to come back to that. But first, I'm really impressed by the work done by Councilman Belza and Vice Mayor Bada Kaboli, along with Jim Shad. They made this happen. Deals don't come together unless both sides recognize value, and value is definitely there for both sides of this equation. I am encouraged that their vision of, for the park, and they have a lot of discretion with respect to what happens at the park year-round, is broader than baseball. And baseball seriously be at the center of gravity that they're considering music events and what have you. So they have the right kind of vision. They've got the management talent, and as people who have, the ballplayers who have come up through this league include Frank Robinson, Hall of Fame baseball player Frank Robinson. I'm trying to remember the pitcher who's still pitching for the L.A. Dodgers, big Texas kid. He came up through this league, and he's a future Hall of Famer. So it's very high-quality baseball, very high-quality. And my compliments to Bruce and Dom and Jim here who saw the value from our side, made it happen. And when they brought them to meet us, we had the pleasure of meeting them the other night at the world-famous Stassi's Fourth Ward. And they are an impressive group. So happy to be there. Anyway, to recommend, but I believe, Councilman Hudson, you had something to share?
So in fairness, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my motion to somebody else who might be leaving us.
Someone do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to defer to the lead of the REC Development Committee, who is really the backbone and the foundation of this effort.
Thank you. I'm motion to approve, as is.
Matter is moved. Do we hear a second?
I'd like to second.
Moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call on this one. Let's do the whole deal. Just pick one.
Okay. Councilmember Belza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Branscombe?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stuart Gilchrist?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Bada Kaboli?
Yes.
I'll give you a batting order next time. Anyway, the matter is passed, and you guys are busy knocking around. I chatted with Skip Russ today. They're looking for office space that has foot traffic so they can sell gear, sell tickets, and have a little bit of room for that and help them do that, hopefully. We're dealing with two happy items here today. Second, resume happy on the agenda, is number two, Hotel Marysville Phase One Demolition Award to JM Environmental. I knew you guys were winners when you walked through the door with those hats on, and that's been a while ago. The recommendation, pass a motion to award a contract in the amount of $779,000 with JM Environmental, Inc., for the purpose of Marysville Hotel, demolition of Marysville Hotel, under emergency procurement guidelines. And, two, authorize the city manager to sign an updated contract. Finally, three, authorize the finance director to make a supplemental appropriation to the appropriate account number. Mr. Vincenzo Crotto, Public Works Director, would you please share the details?
Glad to, Mr. Mayor.
Sell this thing.
Sure. Fantastic. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Vincenzo Crotto, Public Works Director, and I'm here to recommend an award to demolish Hotel Marysville. Next slide. Why are we here? As directed by council this past Tuesday to pursue option two, staff is here to recommend that council award a contract in the amount of $779,000 to JM Environmental and allocate $1 million total for the project to cover contingencies and other ancillary services. This is to demolish the Hotel Marysville and contain the hazmat so that the city and council hands can reopen the adjacent roadways. Good. John Moore is the owner of JM Environmental, and he has spoken to the city council before, as you alluded to, Mr. Mayor, back in July, and he is here today for any questions that the council might have for him. Next slide. Great. Recall, on October 4th, 2024, a panel ruled that the owner of the hotel must pay for the demolition of the building. The city developed a contingency plan and engaged contractors in the case the hotel owners did not go through with the demolition. On November 14th, the city settled with the hotel owners for the River Plaza, and currently owned, and we currently own, the Hotel Marysville property. So staff is executing on that contingency plan. I left this slide up here for a little bit so that the council and the audience can see our awesome city attorney at work there. He did a great job during that presentation, during that hearing. Want to give him more seconds? All right. So this is our contingency plan. Council selected option two to demo all floors in phase one. There you go. I see here in the yellow circle. At the end of phase one, we expect to have the roadways open and see a pile of covered debris at the current location, which is that bottom-right photo after phase one. All right, with our contingency plan, we reached out to two of the low bidders from the July 24th emergency invitation to bid. Remember, that was when we went to bid and it came in, the bids came in well above our city engine estimate, and the city just let that bid expire with no action. Next slide. So then we re-engaged some of the contractors from that bid and solicited requests for proposals. We received two of them, one from JM Environmental and the second one from American Integrated Services. Next slide. All right, so staff received their proposals, and based on review, we're recommending, in the best interest of the city, to move forward with a JM Environmental contract. Here is a timeline for the overall project. We know that the council's goal is to have phase one.
Just before we go to public questions, Mr. Shad, did you have anything? Good? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comment or questions from the council?
Chair?
Sir?
So, Vincenzo, thank you for all the work that you put into this. Really, thank you. I saw the timeline being the final date of January 31st, 2025. So is there a chance of expectancy for it to be done prior to that? Well, that's, I just want to put it out there as a question. Oh. Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to ask the question up. See where to go from there. Thank you very much for that.
And the thing that struck me up there is Mr. Grant in May, and on what the playing field looks like at that point, you have a change in management. I don't know how long Roundfield Grant program will last. So that's a pivot point, decision point. Do we go ahead and do it ourselves, or do another pitch and wait another year? Sir?
I do have one question, and I did not completely read through the proposal. Does this include the gunite covering that we had discussed?
This does not, and we wanted to keep the playing field on bidding comparable. So this just includes tarping, and we would address the gunite if we choose to go that direction separately.
Okay.
Through a change order.
Okay, thank you.
I wouldn't have shared that with those guys present, but you did.
Did you want to talk to the contractors here?
No, we're good.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pass a motion to accept as proposed by staff.
A motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's do another roll call. No? You don't start with me. I go last.
All right. All right, Councilmember Belza?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilchrist?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes. Yes.
Vice Mayor Budakavoli?
Yes.
Mayor Branscombe?
Exceed unanimous. Yes, ma'am. Congratulations, guys. This is a happy day. This is a happy day. We have no doubt, you know, my friend Rodney Riddle, who is with McCarthy Construction, he had recommended you and another name, and y'all rose to the top. God bless you. Thank you, sir.
John, if you have a couple of minutes to stick around, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, always, Justice.
All right, great.
Okay, anybody have a comment they'd like to share? I'll just look around and see if anybody has a comment.
I'll just say something in regards to what we just voted on with the hotel, and just what a journey it's been over the last few months to get to this point. And we've had to make some turns and shifts and adjustments and jump through some different hoops, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm really thrilled to see us come to this point and have some finality, at least on this first phase, moving forward and getting Marysville back to the operating, you know, position that it needs to be. And so I know many of us have ground through many, many, many meetings. Brant, you've done a great job through this process. Jim, you've navigated this superbly, the wisdom that's come out of the council, Mr. Mayor, you yourself, and Bruce. And it's just great to see this come to a finality. And the interesting thing about this is that you have the old grand Hotel Marysville in the memory of it. I think will live on for many, many, many years, decades, and hopefully centuries to come. But in its place, we've got a ribbon cutting coming up on the new Hyatt Hotel in Marysville. And I just see just some neat, you know, shifting of era there for the city of Marysville with all the great things that have happened over the last few years. And today with baseball and this hotel item is just great to see. And I'm excited about the future of the city. It's upward and onward from here. So that's all, Mr. Mayor.
So when the motion was made and passed last Tuesday about the, the issue of the hotel and unanimously approved, at the end, I made some thankful comments towards staff. And I think I missed a few. Omi, thank you for all the work you do here. Chief Sacks, you and your department have worked tirelessly on a horrible traffic situation with Public Works. And I just want to say thank you for that, because that just kind of sucked. And I missed Brant with the legal rhetoric you led us through, though I didn't agree at every step. I just want to say thank you for leading us through these many months of stuff that I would rather deal with differently. So thank you. And then to the public, this has been a horrendous type situation for many of the businesses. And though some of the businesses choose to slander our leadership instead of actually ask, I just thank you for their patience and kind of go from there. It's been a, a pretty, pretty situation all the way around for everybody. And I believe in teamwork, and I believe in leadership, and I believe that even though it didn't go as fast as I want, it went, and it's done, and it's working. Thank you, everybody.
Yes. Along with my fellow counsel, thanking the city staff, everyone in city staff, I would also like to thank the Yuba Sutter region and everyone north and south for their patience during this ordeal. We're looking forward to closure. Thank everyone for their patience. Please drive safely.
Bruce?
I just want to say how successful of a week this has been between the ball team, between this contract, some positive news with the Caltrans issues. It's probably more for you and your staff than us even getting the weight lifted off our shoulders a little bit. I think we've, we're in more meetings since the fire than we probably did our whole term. So I just actually want to congratulate all of us for a good job and all the staff for an amazing job. And hopefully now we can start getting on to some positive things.
At our last meeting, I mentioned the apparent passage of Measure G by an overwhelming margin, surprising margin in the context of other communities who I've shared this information with. And this is, again, that's a sign of trust in city management, certainly more, probably more city, city management and the city council. We, we make the decisions, the council does, city staff executes. And finishing this involved two significant tasks. One, negotiations with the owners. And it was difficult. They're protecting their interests. They have every right to. It did make it difficult. We saw our way through it and came to a conclusion. And now we have reached a conclusion with a highly qualified contractor. When it's all said and done, when the final book is written on this episode, and how much it net cost the city, I, fingers crossed, we still maintain that trust of the populace. Doing our best, that's for sure. Doing our best. I commend the council. I commend them.
To the chair.
Sir.
If you're finished with your comments, I'd like to add one more. Last meeting, we forgot to do this, and
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It is Mr. Zinski's final, final, final council meeting. So I just wanted to give a huge thank you for all of your sacrifice and commitment to the city of Marysville. And I'd like to make a recommendation that, I know we have our city manager report, but as we move towards adjournment, that we do it in the honor of our finance director's service for the city of Marysville.
Jed, you're going to have to say something. And I'm, and I'm going to ask you something. I bet you learned a lot. And you know how much, you know how much we all think of you.
Well, yes, I have learned a lot. So thank you, everybody, for this. This was my first government job. I did start with Marysville nine and a half years ago, answering phones, filing, pretty much worked myself into the finance director within three years. Thought, oh, no problem. I've got this. How hard can it be? What little did I know? So it's been a learning challenge every day. I love what I do. It's just, it's a new time for my family. We need to kind of move on and do something a little bit different. I am leaving here with absolutely no regrets of any of my time here. I still get to stick around as a consultant, still help out where I can. But it's just, I have learned and done things that I didn't even know existed. And it's worked with great consultants, a few great city managers, you know, my department heads that I've been working with for six years. It was actually this week I became the finance director six years ago. So it's just, it's been an amazing journey. And whoever comes in next, I just, I hope I got it to a place where they can pick it up and they can take it to the next level for you guys, because that's where this city is going. And you're just going to continue to have that with the current leadership you have. So it's been an honor.
Jed, when, when you review your resume with whoever you may do business with in the future, this, I, I hope you recog, I mean, I'm sure you recognize as an important point, but to move up the learning curve, as you did, is significant. Very few people could do that. And you became a real serious chief financial officer. And CFOs are so important to any organization, and we have benefited from that. Thank you. Thank you. Can, can we, can I adjourn first?
Yes, you can.
Really? Oh, okay.
Well, hold it. Did you have anything else? Okay, we'll, we'll leave, we'll leave the session open. Stuart, Stuart, Stuart's a stickler for these things. Shall we all get down there? Wait a minute. Wait a minute, okay. Who needs us? Okay. The city manager's here that he doesn't have anything further to share. And our next regular council meeting, which sadly but purposefully will be Councilman Bell's.
Yuba Sutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.